Wrong button. Good evening and welcome to the October 29th meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Tarrant County College District. We have several guests tonight and we look forward to welcoming you individually and hearing from you. At this time, on the agenda, we have public comment and I have a card from Karen Silverberg, who I happen to know is a member of our faculty and the Chair of the Faculty Senate, which is, we call the JCC.
The Joint Consultation Committee, correct. President Appleman, Chancellor Robinson, members of the Board of Trustees, I am here as a representative of the faculty of all of Tarrant County College District at this first meeting of a new era and to ask you, as you begin to determine how you will select a new permanent chancellor for Tarrant County College District that you consider two matters that are of significant importance to the faculty. First, the faculty believe that an institution of the caliber and quality of Tarrant County College and the 16th largest institution of higher education in the country deserves a chancellor with exceptional qualifications and that a national search is necessary to ensure that people of that caliber are aware of the opening and have the opportunity to choose to come to Tarrant County College. Secondly, the faculty are very interested in helping to participate in choosing the chancellor. They understand that it is absolutely the job of this board to ultimately choose the new leader for our college. However, as has occurred in the past, we would like to have a significant role in helping with the selection process and the opportunity to contribute our expertise, our knowledge, and our interest in the success of this institution going forward to the selection process. Thank you. We know that you will choose for us an exceptional new chancellor and we have every confidence that the process as it goes forward will be the right process for Tarrant County College and for the students and people of Tarrant County. Thank you.
Thank you. For those of you who are new to us, generally, we do not respond to public comment, but this is kind of a special time in our lives and so I'm going to assume the privilege of the chair and thank all of you who have offered suggestions regarding the upcoming search for our new chancellor. As Karen mentioned, the board owns the assignment. We have not met at all about it. We will meet in the executive session this evening and in an almost all-day session tomorrow to plan our next steps. As I have done previously, I again thank you for your strength and endurance in the past weeks. Everyone has given a little extra push at the wheel and your expertise, which Karen mentioned, and devotion to your jobs is what gives this board comfort and guidance. I thought my three choices, quote, "Don't give up, don't give in, give it the best you've got," was a good one, but I have a new one to share with you. If you want to go fast, go alone. If you want to go far, go together. The only thing I personally know for sure at this point is that this will not be a fast process. It will be slow, it will be painful at times, it will be tedious at times, but hopefully the end result will be a great reward and enjoyed by all of us. An element of confidentiality is required at certain points in this process and I know you know that and understand it. There is no perfect candidate out there and probably there will not be unanimity in our choice. As Ms. Silverberg mentioned, this is the beginning of a new era, our next 50 years. We need to get it right. We will not replace what we have lost. We will start anew and there will be change and we will all need to adapt and adopt that change. If you know what you desire or what you do not desire, send me an email. My address is the same as yours, first dot, first name dot, last name at tccd.edu. We need and we want your patience and your trust as we move forward. And now, a deep breath. Let's have a moment of silence to honor the memory of a friend and a leader lost, Chancellor Irma Johnson Hadley. In her honor. Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is the presentation on student access and success in administrative programs and projects, which we always look forward to each meeting. Ms. Robinson, you want to introduce the first, the speaker tonight?
Well, I'm going to have Dr. Allen.
Dr. Allen Gobin is going to present tonight. I think he's got some students with him.
Thank you, Mrs. Appleman, Mrs. Robinson, and members of the board. It is with great pleasure that I share an update with you from Northeast Campus. We had a wonderful scholarship luncheon and, Mrs. Appleman, thank you again for attending along with many members of the Celt. And I made a comment that, there's an old saying, people come into your life for a reason, for a season, or for a lifetime. I'm not sure whether these students came into our lives for a reason, for a season, or for a lifetime, but I think after you see their presentation, you'll be really glad that they're in our lives at Tarrant County College. We have a wonderful PTK, better known as Phi Theta Kappa, but a lot of people call it PTK, chapter on our campus. The advisors that we have with us tonight, we have some other advisors that work with the program, but the ones with us tonight are Jared Landine and Shawanda Riley, our Learning Lab Manager and an Assistant Professor for us on Northeast Campus. I'll invite them to the podium to introduce our students and share with you a little bit
Thank you very much, Dr. Gobin. Mrs. Appleman, Mrs. Robinson, and Board of Trustees, thank you for the opportunity to share the great things that our Phi Tau chapter of Phi Theta Kappa are doing at the Northeast Campus. I also want to introduce, or Shawanda Riley already has been, but we also have Stacy Stewie. She is another advisor. She is here tonight. She's a faculty member at Northeast Campus. And others that are not able to be here, Janelle Buck and Lisette Blanco Cerdah and Deborah Sykes. So, they all work very hard to provide support to the students for the things that they do. And our students that we have, these excellent students are Rebecca Reyes, Matthew Pendolfo, and Gina Rosado. So, just a little bit about Phi Theta Kappa. It has, this is an amazing number, it has an overall 91% completion rate. The students that take part and are active in it, they complete their degrees 91% of the time. And in the past five years, previous Phi Tau officers and members have successfully completed their degrees and gone on to these amazing schools. Vanderbilt University, the young man there was, let me lift this up just a little bit, the young man there, Stanley Chibueze, he was last, he was the president of the organization. He's at Vanderbilt now. We have members who went on to Southern Methodist University, Texas A&amp;M, Texas Tech, Texas Wesleyan, Tarleton State, among others. So, whenever they take part, they get really incredible opportunities. So, and some of the things that they do to gain these opportunities, they get involved in these projects and they involve pretty rigorous academic research and analysis. It helps them to expand their leadership roles and expand just as leaders. And also an opportunity for action and in-service or advocacy and collaboration and reflection. So, many of our past projects have been recognized as distinguished at both the regional and the international level. So, as you saw in that picture, they were standing there with some of the awards that we have prominently displayed in our Student Center. So, the two projects that are kind of the big projects that they work on are the Honors in Action and the College Project. And the Honors in Action provides them an opportunity to apply the research and the learning that they've done into real-world problem-solving and develop an in-depth service or advocacy project that helps with the community. And the College Project is a specifically, it's specifically focused on enhancing the campus and strengthening the relationship of the students with the campus administration. So, let's see. And so, I will step aside and let them tell you the rest.
Mrs. Appleman, Mrs. Robinson, and the members of the board, thank you. For our Honors in Action program, our community-based project, throughout the summer, the Phi Tau Officer Team met on a weekly basis to decide what our topic would be for the year. With the Supreme Court ruling on gay marriage, the transition of Caitlyn Jenner, and the controversy surrounding Rachel Dolezal's identification as an African-American woman, the topic of identity was frequent in our discussions. We studied the difference between social identity and self-identity and we started studying in significance intersectional identity. Intersectional identity focuses on how social and personal factors intersect along with experiences and shape and form our unique identity. While brainstorming how to implement our Honors in Action project, and after meeting with our campus president, Dr. Gobin, one location stood out in particular. It was our early college high school and it seemed to be the perfect location to study intersectional identity because these students are still in high school, but they're doing college coursework. And these two seemingly opposing facts helped us to decide to use and have their help for our Honors in Action project. And hopefully, through our Honors in Action project, our goal is to increase the discussion about intersectionality and provide an opportunity for personal expression. Thank you.
You took my paper.
Accidents happen, right? No. In administering our Honors in Action project, we have really about three stages. First, we will administer a survey to the participating high school students at our early college high school. The survey will consist of 10 questions, asking them to list 10 things or roles of who they are. For example, for me, it'd be like, "I am a student, I am a son, I'm a brother, I'm a musician," things like that. In addition, they will also be encouraged to complete an art project, painting and decorating plates, like you can see on the slide. We will also encourage them to compose a brief artist statement about their plate, explaining, you know, what it means. It can have struggles they've faced on it, different components of their identity, things about their heritage. The ones on the slide there and the black plate going around right now were made by our Vice President of Service, Ms. Gina Rosado. And they really focus on her cultural heritage, her religious beliefs, and her home country of Puerto Rico. Second, or, excuse me, third, we will display the plates at an on-campus symposium and it's not just an art show. We will also have speakers there talking and discussing the topic of intersectional identity. In addition to the TCC faculty, we also have Professor, or, excuse me, Dr. Cray from the University of North Texas, and we are looking to the community for two other speakers, such as therapists or psychologists. Again, as Honors in Action is community-based, we are also planning a second off-campus symposium, which is very similar to the first, and we hope through this to reach a much larger group of people, therefore increasing the awareness and discussion around intersectional identity. Lastly, we are currently in negotiations with the North Ridge Hills Library, excuse me, to display the plates as a temporary exhibit. Now to present our college project, our Vice President of Service, Ms. Gina Rosado.
Woo, my gosh. All right. Mrs. Appleman, Mrs. Robinson, members of the board, thank you. All right. And now for our campus-focused project, the college project, we are partnering with Men of Color mentoring to promote the mentoring on campus. Harkening back to our last Honors in Action project where we mentored children about going outside and learning about nature, we decided that our college project will also focus on mentoring. When we met with Dr. Gobin over the summer, he pitched to us the idea of reciprocal mentoring, where students learn from the faculty and vice versa. We chose the Men of Color program because we saw that the organization does not have as big a presence on the Northeast Campus that it has on other campuses. We sought to uplift and bring awareness to the organization by hosting a mentoring event on the 9th of November. It will be a presentation showing what mentoring is, what the benefits are, and some testimonials would also be included, followed by a Q&amp;A. Our goal is to bring awareness to this program and connect faculty and staff to students so they can cultivate a mentor-mentee relationship. That'll be all. Oh, do you guys have any questions about Honors in Action or College Project?
Where is the program on the 9th? On your campus?
Yes, ma'am.
Where is the program on November 9th?
It will be held in center corner from 12 to 1:30.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you know that you're speaking iambic pentameter?
We keep him around for little pearls of wisdom.
It should be very easy for you to become a poet, really.
Dr. Gobin, they keep you on your toes, I bet. They keep you on your toes out there.
That concludes the presentation from Northeast Campus. We thank you very much for entertaining the dialogue.
Thank you. And thank all of you students for coming. You are welcome to stay if you like, or, do you want to do that? Go ahead. Come up front. We want to take your photo with this handsome crowd up here at the table. Do you want to stand up or behind us? How do you want to come up? Wear plates, bring the plates.
Where'd we get all these sort of people from? On three, one, two, three. Thank you very much.
That's what keeps us going. I would ask the board approval of the minutes of the meetings of September 24th, 2015, and October 1, 2015, both of which you received earlier in your packets. Motion to approve, please. Dr. Morrison, second. Any, Dr., Ms. Ayala, any discussion? All those in favor, aye. Any opposed? Committee reports, audit and finance, Mr. Carter.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee met yesterday, had several items on the agenda. A couple of audits, one of them was of the aviation program, particularly the connection with VA funding and so forth. We've been looking at, to make sure that we're doing it correctly. Long story short, was that we owe the Veterans Administration about $200,000 and they owe us a little bit more than 40, so we're making that adjustment now and we've corrected the, basically, the funding procedure. There's no action required because we'll just, we'll correct it within the normal billing process. We did a, the, there's a legal requirement that the expenses of the trustees be audited every year. That audit's been completed. You might be interested to know that the trustees spent $18,548.98 of taxpayer money over the past year. They look at the travel expense vouchers, all those sort of things, and found zero discrepancies. This is not a sample, they look at each and every expense that the audits go through. We, there's also an internal audit report, which is basically just a summary of all the audits that we've done, which we've covered in this thing now, but it's required that it be filed and that it be placed on the internet. In fact, the only recommendation the committee has is, the only board action is that you approve that fiscal year, 2015 annual internal audit. And, you know, I'd like to make a motion that we do that. I don't think a second's required, but you've already seen all the audits that are in it.
The motion is by the, from, on behalf of the committee, so if there's no further discussion or questions, all those in favor, aye. Any opposed?
Okay. And just a couple of other things, the, your, the audit department is, so it's an internal audit, basically, an internal review of themselves, which they've done, and I noticed that they gave themselves glowing remarks, grades.
Why not?
But also, every third year, you're supposed to have an audit by a peer, internal auditor, and sometime next year, the auditor from San Jacinto will audit our auditors. So, the auditors themselves are audited in the process and that will take place next September, and then we'll see if their glowing self-evaluation still holds up when the San Jacinto people show up. We, we had two hotline complaints, you know, our audit department is charged with doing that. One of them was a complaint about inaccurate salary requests and hourly reports, which was investigated and found to be without merit. Second was a complaint that, by a student, that they had been told to drop a course and that therefore they were entitled to some level of refunds. And then, when we asked for documentation for that, there was none. It's the second complaint, so again, that complaint was found to be without merit at all. That's about the sum of that. We have to make a status report as well, and again, that status report is that the state requires it. Not only does our audit plan have to be filed on the, on our website, but the findings of each and every one of the audits have to be on there and then that, we have found that to be so. That's it.
Thank you. 50th anniversary, Dr. Morrison. Thank you, Ms. Appleman.
Okay. Thank you. As we continue to celebrate, what really makes Tarrant County College great is its people. And every time I am either on a campus or in the community and I meet people from the campuses, I am in awe of great talent that has dedicated themselves to be a part of this college over the past 50 years. And each of the campuses set out to, in their own way, commemorate the 50th anniversary celebration. For instance, on the South Campus, they had several storyboards that commemorate the 50-year history of TCC. They were by decades. They hung in the Student Center, you can see there. These displays were designed by Ms. Eileen Hart. She's an AOA, which is an Administrative Office Assistant to the Director of the South Campus Library, and she's a professional photographer. The second one is on the upper level and the first set is on the lower level in Student Center. They are wonderful, worth a trip to the South Campus to look at. You might also recall that there was a jazz combo from the Southeast Campus Early College High School that performed as part of the '90s Celebration Group when we were down on Panther Island, and their performance was such a hit that they did an encore performance at their Early College High School Fall Dance in September. That was really exciting. And the Northwest Campus is hosting a Golden Jubilee Speaker Series in their library, September, October, and November, with such topics as 50 Years of Computer Science, Code Case, Looking Back at an Unsolved Homicide from the '70s, Crime Rates, Prisons, and the Loss of Faith in the Nation's Institutions, 1970's Cinema, New Hollywood and the Rise of the Modern Blockbuster, and in November 11th, Human Library, Libraries and the Politics of Radical Inclusion. The Northeast and Trinity River Campuses are also still enjoying their decades on display. display, which are throughout the campus, and be sure I'll come up with some idea to share these around the community before the 50th anniversary ends. So thank you all for all you do, and I wanted to say thanks to all the employees who continue to buy in and help us celebrate our 50 years as success within reach.
Indeed, thank you. Item number nine on the agenda. We have a special guest with us, and Mrs. Robinson will introduce him and the presentation.
Ms. Appleman, you remember in the September board meeting during the chancellor's report, I mentioned that Arlington ISD is building a Career Technical Education Center, and Dr. Cavassos had met with myself and several KELP members in September, and it was, it's very, very impressive, and I asked him to come present to the board. So Dr. Cavassos, the Superintendent of Schools for AISD, is here to present.
President Appleman, Chancellor Robinson, members of the board, thank you for the invitation to come speak with you this evening and to really share some information about our continued work together. And you know that we work very well together with dual credit, with thought leadership, with our early college high school, and so this is yet another opportunity, not only for the adults, but an opportunity for our students. And that's where we really make the difference in our systems, both our systems. And so before we begin our presentation, I'd like to introduce the people that are here from AISD. I'll start with our school board president, Ms. Jamie Sullins. Well, you can clap. And then we'll introduce the others, and you can hold your applause. She is the president of the board. So Cindy Powell, our CFO, and Mr. Craig Wright, our Director of Career Technical Education, Ms. Ginger Polster, who is the Coordinator of Career Technical Education, and Dr. Stephen Wertz, who's our Chief Academic Officer for our school district. And so Dr. Wertz will do most of this presentation, and then I'll come back towards the end to wrap up, but I'll say that with our development of this partnership, and we're building that Career Tech Center, so we have some time, because it's under development and under, it'll be under construction soon, opening 2017, the fall of 2017. And we had an opportunity through the leadership of your chancellor and others in TCC to meet with all the campus presidents, which was, I think, a first for us, where we brought the campus presidents together to meet, to discuss an opportunity that we have for our students. And it was a great meeting and a great opportunity for us to discuss what we can do together for the future of our young people. And then before Stephen begins, I'll also want to thank Bill Coppola, who has his campus in Arlington, as you know, and he has been instrumental in working with us to advance a lot of the work that we're going to talk about tonight. So Dr. Wertz will start, and then we'll come back and talk some more.
President Appleman, Chancellor Robinson, and members of the board, thank you for having us here this evening to share with you an exciting project that we're working on in Arlington ISD to expand our partnership with TCC and provide meaningful learning experiences for our students as well as the community and your students at TCC. This is, okay. This is a rendering of the CTE Center that we will be constructing in Arlington, and it just gives you a visual of what the outside of the structure will look like. And as I go through the presentation, I will share with you some drawings of what the inside of the building floor plan will look like, how we're organizing the academic houses within the site itself, and then mainly speak to you about the programs that we'll be offering and where we believe we can really maximize our partnership with TCC to provide programming for your students and ours. In Arlington ISD, we have one main objective, which is that 100% of our students graduate on time and excel at the college or career of their choice. And the CTE Center is a real opportunity for our students to really maximize their opportunities when it comes to preparing themselves for a career outside of the K-12 experience. Our, our, our goal with the CTE Center is to really increase access. We have students, we have over 64,000 students in Arlington ISD, and our goals in all the programs that we design in Arlington is to really increase the opportunities and access that students have and to remove any barriers that may prevent them from having access to those programs. Our goals, when it pertains to the CTE Center, is that our students would be able to earn a TCC certification of completion or an industry standard certification that's designed by the businesses and/or industries, and then also possibly a licensure at the state of Texas. We have collaborated with several partners in the design of our programs and of the facility itself as we've gone through the process. These are some examples of the partners, and I'll just highlight a few. The Arlington Chamber of Commerce, of course, Tarrant County College, and our partnerships in the programs that we've designed there. Arlington Fire Department, the Police Department. We've actually partnered with several of the local universities, including the University of Texas at Arlington, and some of the businesses that are really connected to some of the internships that we offer our students, including Lockheed Martin, General Motors, Trinity Industries, and others. This is an example of the first floor at the CTE Center, and you'll notice, I know that the drawing is somewhat small, but you'll notice in color that each of the academic houses, so to speak, or departments are colored in different colorations. And as I go through the presentation this evening and I share with you the programs, you'll, each of those programs are represented in a location in the building where the kids can collaborate and have access to resources and materials that will allow them to maximize their learning. The second floor, here are some examples where our health services are noted. Our engineering department is here, as well as our business area. I wanted to share with you also a little bit of information regarding some enrollment trends in our CTE programming that we've had over the last several years. This is an example of our trends over the last six years, and some of the students may be duplicated in the data, and I say that just so that we're not talking that, we're not, we're not indicating here that 22,000 individual students are represented in the CTE program. We're indicating that 22,000 students are enrolling in multiple courses in our programming. And so you can see the demand for CT coursework has significantly increased. In fact, over the last six years, it's increased over 30%, and just in the last year alone, we've had a 15% increase. So we expect this trend to continue. And so as we've thought about our students' future and the opportunities that we want to provide them in Arlington, we recognize that the CTE coursework has a very prominent role in their learning. One of our focus areas in Arlington is to ensure that our students have opportunities to receive certifications and to earn them by exam once they've complete their courses. And this is, you can, here you can see the difference in just one year in the number of certifications that were earned by exam from our students between the years of 2013, 14, to the school year of 1415, and we do anticipate that to continue to increase over the course of this school year. As we've been planning our program with the CTE Center, what we've noticed is that our high schools, we have six comprehensive high schools, and they are quite full. And this, this, this situation has caused us to also think about, how can we maximize the opportunity to provide increased programming for our students and also provide relief to our six comprehensive high schools? So the CTE Center, once it's designed, will help relieve some of the overcrowding that the high schools are experiencing and allow us to offer these programs, but give students an opportunity to take them at an alternate site and relieve some of the space that's needed at the high schools. High school students that are freshmen and sophomore students will take their lower-level or foundational courses at the comprehensive high school, the CTE programs that are the comprehensive high schools, and when they get to their juniors and senior levels and are enrolling in more advanced coursework connected to career and tech education, they, those courses will be offered at the CTE Center. We will be opening a total of 39 comprehensive programs of study in the 2017-18 school year, and that will also include an additional 24 certification opportunities for our students, which will include a total of 39. And I, I wanted to share with you specifically which programs of study. There are 15 academic bands that are represented in our programs of study and 39 studies, 39 programs. And each of the programs that are, where the asterisk is noted, represents a new program of study that we'll be opening at the CTE Center. Some of those include veterinary medicine, graphic design, sports medicine. We also have culinary arts. We are also going to be including our law enforcement, automotive technology, aviation technology, CNC, mobile application development, computer technician. So this is some of our programs that are new. So you can see that we're not only just creating a space where students can continue their learning from programs that we already have in place, our goal is to widen the opportunities for students to really tap into their interests and talents. This is also a slide that represents the current and potential workforce dual credit programs that the CTE Center will offer. Again, areas that are at, where the asterisk is noted are new or potential programs. For example, in the information technology area, Programming 1, in Chief Technology Professional, there are three opportunities, administrative specialist, application specialist, and office technology specialist. You'll notice in aviation technology, those are all advanced composite technology, airframe and power plant, those are all new, as well as commercial pilot and commercial for the airplane and the helicopter, both are new. I won't go through all of them because you can see them in front of you, but it's just another example of how we're trying. Our goal with the CTE Center is to ensure that every course that is offered at the CTE Center will have either a dual credit attached to it or a certification in the workforce. And now I'll turn some time over to Dr. Cavassos to speak a little bit more about our partnership.
So this is the second to the last slide. I thought we should give you a warning of kind of where we are in the presentation. And so this is the slide that I usually like to talk about because this is the opportunity here in terms of our partnership. So we'll just kind of go down the list here of things that we should consider and that we're working on now. Offer technical dual credit courses for all the courses offered at the CTE Center. So set that standard like we do together, TCC and AISD. Set that standard high and just go into it with that every course is, you know, will offer a dual credit, technical dual credit. We'll work out the details as we go. You set the standard high, right? And then a two-plus-two degree program. We're already in conversation with universities about how we can make this seamless so that when they receive their associate's degree from TCC, that it really is two years worth of work, and you go two more years and you're done. It's not three more years, it's not four more years, it's not three and a half more years, it's two more years. And there's a lot of interest, and interest on both sides of the institutions here. So that's one that we see a lot of potential and have had already early conversations, or I have with universities. Students obtain stackable credentials, and we know that as students continue to earn credit, dual credit, technical dual credit, that they advance their accrual of credits so that they can then continue with TCC, get an associate's degree, et cetera. Share learning space to create course opportunities for TCC and AISD. When we're building this Career Tech Center, and we're going to serve about 2,000 students a day, we should share that space because this is an opportunity not only for our students but for Arlington and the Arlington community. And so when we share our space, we know that we can serve more. And so we will go down to the next, next kind of bullet there, which is the learning day would include evenings, weekends, summer for technical dual credit. So as we go into the scheduling of this Career Tech Center, not as an add-on, that maybe we should offer some classes on Saturday, but we build the schedule that way right off the bat, and then we advertise our courses, both for our students and for the community of Arlington, that are TCC students or potential TCC students, that can then decide if they can take some of these courses and what the right schedule is for them. So we envision some students that will stay at their traditional high school but will come on evenings or weekends to get their welding certification or you name it, the programs that we discussed. The last bullet is kind of a simple kind of phrase there, but it's really involved, and that is to mix or combine our students with TCC students as appropriate to maximize the course opportunities for everyone. And so we talked about this, and kind of the first reaction of that is the typical reaction, which is, are you really talking about mixing, you know, adults and community members with students, et cetera? And you know this, and I remind people all the time, that our early college students, that's what they're doing, and they're doing it at freshman and sophomore level. They're going with the adults at TCC and taking classes. Now, when we mix and combine our programs, it maximizes the opportunity for everyone. So if you, if you, another way of looking at this potential partnership is to think of those courses and those programs at all the five campuses, that we would then be asking to consider offering them in Arlington for our community and our students. And so that would, I don't use the word consolidation because that might not be, we all have different definitions of that, but access, so that our students and our community members have access to this wonderful coursework that exists across your five colleges, right? And we know that you don't duplicate your programs. If you have culinary arts, that's the only place in Southeast, for example. So we would ask that we bring those program offerings, and we would work together to staff it and to resource it, and right off the bat, so we don't, this doesn't become an afterthought, but this is how we build the Career Tech Center, is through this partnership. I will share that we understand that there are some resources that should be dedicated to this. For example, we understand that there will be a need for a library and a resource specifically for TCC resources and things like that. We've already mapped out some space for that shared resource area for a TCC library, if you will. That's, you know, that's a little early to call it that, but it's never too early. So it's a resource specifically for, you know, college type of learning. So this is, this is a beginning list, it's a very kind of a lofty list, but it's something that we feel we can accomplish together. We've already shown with our FIRE Academy that we offer in AISD, they're fully certified with FIRE certification, EMT certification, and we know that when we offer these type of classes, and this is, this is, I'll be careful how I say this, but we know that our students outperform sometimes the adults. And so when our students are able to keep up and outperform and do well, we should open those doors, at least from my standpoint and our standpoint. So those are some things that we want to talk about in terms of consideration for partnership. I will invite Ms. Jamie Sullins to just kind of bring some greetings and share any remarks she would like to share, and then we're going to be open for questions.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. Good evening and greetings from the Arlington Independent School Board. We're certainly thrilled to continue on in partnership, and as you can see, we're also certainly very thrilled with our superintendent and our staff that are working continually. It's like opportunity is unlimited. It's an exciting time, and opportunities that present themselves in the future, I have no doubt, we will work on together and open those doors as well. So just as a thank you from the board of Arlington, we are thrilled to work with you. We're thrilled for this continuing opportunity. We're looking forward to 2017 to open those doors, and so glad that we're not waiting until 2017 to serve students. Thank you.
At this point, we'll answer any questions that you may have.
Mr. Heath? It's, it's the second. We're on a new system, we're all having trouble with all, which button is the right one. But while he's figuring that out, congratulations on, I want to go back to high school. What a great program, really, and we will look forward to continuing our partnership and being a part of this. Mr. Heath?
What, what percentage of your students do you anticipate will take advantage of this?
So that's a good question. Upwards of 30% or more, and remember, these are high school students who are juniors and seniors, and so a lot of students will be taking advantage of this. We are fortunate, our board has continued to invest in block scheduling, which allows them to have 90-minute periods, and it's an A and B day, so students can spend half a day, a whole day, to, in this center, and so we would serve a good number of students.
Mr. Greenhill?
I just can't help but think about the time that we went, a couple of months ago, to witness the signature of the memorandum of understanding between TCU and TCC, and many of the things that you were saying between us was about the same as between us and TCU, you know, be sure that you, we all coordinate these things. I think we've been there, done that, and I'm sure we all got the staff that can do this and help you out. But this is, sounds like a marvelous, marvelous project, and I assume that we will be, the staff will be going, discussing a memorandum of understanding at some point, and that's what the goal is. Okay. But I couldn't help but think about that and our dear chancellor, Irma, telling, you know, telling the TCU staff, well, you know, be sure, you know, when we're, when we're doing this credit stuff, you know, be sure and know that we really educate these kids and do it well. I couldn't help but remember that.
Yep, absolutely, absolutely.
I don't really have a question, but I do think that really what you're doing reflects the realities of a changing world, a changing educational picture and needs, and it's, it sounds terrific, it really does. And it's, it sounds terrific, it really does.
And then I'll add that, you know, 70% of our students are economically disadvantaged, right? And so we don't see that as a barrier, we see that as an opportunity, an opportunity to lower that number, lower the percentage of economically disadvantaged, and reduce poverty. And this is, and this may be, you know, I've shared this with the city of Arlington as well, this is a poverty reduction strategy. Education is, we all know that, right? But this is a tangible, and it doesn't take 30 years. It can be done in a couple of years as students become productive and are ready for the workforce. So this is the opportunity, not only for our students but the community of Arlington.
Yeah, I was going to bring up, you know, we're all, we'd all talk about closing the gap in education. And this provides a vision for people that, where they, they know if they attend this education, this training, they know they're going to get a job, they know what's out there for them. That keeps them in school. I think that's, it's a tremendous program.
That's correct. And then they go to TCC, and then with the two plus two, they'll go to a university and continue their pathway, right? And we know that once students are future oriented, that the pathway is much, much more realistic for them. This is making sure that they're future oriented early on and with tangible results like dual credit.
Where would this building be?
Actually, this building will be on the intersection approximately of 303 and New York, which is Pioneer New York.
Oh, okay.
It's really in the student population center of the district.
That's my question, it's close.
And it is close, it is close. But you'll note that this is asking for, from the five institutions, all five institutions, to help in terms of bringing access to our students in programming. And again, I can't stress enough the work that Bill has done with our district and the leadership that he's provided to open a lot of those doors. And so we sincerely appreciate that, Bill, and on behalf of the AISD.
May I say, from a historical perspective, it has been brought to my mind as we revisited the election in 1965, that there were portions of the community who feared that the development of the community college would detract from their opportunities. And so I think it's worth noting that in this year of our 50th anniversary celebration, we have forged many new partnerships. And this is, again, a new partnership that we're forging to show that, you know, we are a good corporate citizen in the community and we are working with all the citizens to enhance the success. Congratulations on bringing this forward and so excited to be a part of it.
Thank you.
Dr. Morrison's being very politically correct. It was the institutions of higher learning who were fearful of a junior college coming along. And she's right, this is a great affirmation, if you will, of what is possible.
I really wouldn't be surprised to see this become a model for lots of other school districts.
That's correct. And again, this is an accelerant to the students.
A lot of people are going to be looking at you, I think.
Absolutely, absolutely. And it's something that we can do together, in the interest of young people, in the interest of students, your students, our students, our community. I'm a little biased, I would like everything for Arlington. But we know we have to share with the rest of Tarrant County. But this is a game changer for Arlington. And we know that the community that we serve is many times dependent on these type of opportunities to break cycles of poverty. And that's our mission.
Thank you.
Ms. Solins, I wrote you a personal note and I sent it to the Arlington ISD office, so it'll probably be Christmas before you see it. As you can imagine, we received many letters and notes and emails of condolence. And yours rose right to the top, and I brought it tonight to share with the board later. Every member of the Arlington ISD School Board signed the letter. And I don't know how you made that happen, but I want to know. I can rally my troops. That was very impressive and very appreciated.
We found it tremendously important and a priority to celebrate the life of a hero in our hearts. And prayers are with you all.
Thank you, thank you. We appreciate it. And thank you all for coming.
And I will add the same thing about Chancellor Hadley. You know, I won't go too much into that because I could go on for a long time, but we had a special relationship.
Yes, you did.
And this is the expectation, that the work continues. And it's advanced and it's accelerated, and we serve our students. And so in her honor, right, we bring this and I won't go into too much detail other than to say, you know, this is part of that continued work and that we all do together collectively.
She would be very pleased. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Dr. Wurz?
If I could just add one more thing, I hope that this is the, one of the beautiful days of the neighborhood she dreamed of.
Indeed, indeed, yes. And you all are welcome to stay, or if you need to get back home, we understand that. We have more guests in the room, and I would welcome to the podium Mr. McLendon and his guests from Ulyss, Mayor Linda Martin, City Manager Loretta Getchell, Assistant City Manager Chris Baker, and Cindy Powell, I'm sorry, Cindy Powell, she's with Arlington, sorry. And David Pettit, David, are you here? No, he's not. Okay. Mr. McLendon?
Okay, good evening, Madam Chancellor and Madam Chairman, Trustees. The city of Ulyss has come in to request the TCC Board of Directors to consider the approval of an amendment to the TCC Participation Agreement for increased funding to the TIFF III Glade Parks. Other tax entities have already approved this previously, both the city and the county. The district recommends that the chancellor and her board consider this request. A proposed modification in draft amendments have been reviewed. And so Ms., I would now like to invite Ms. Loretta Getchell to come in, make a presentation on behalf of.
Thank you. Chairman Appleman and chancellor and members of the board, we appreciate the opportunity to come before you this afternoon. I don't, I hope I'm tall enough to get to this mic. On behalf of the city of Ulyss and the mayor, we certainly appreciate your giving us the opportunity to be on your agenda tonight. And also would like to thank Mr. McLendon for always guiding us through the process. The Ulyss City Council created the Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Number Three on November the 9th of 2010, and it was to assist with infrastructure improvements for a new mixed-use development that was approximately 200 acres. At that time, in order to make the project financially feasible, we requested participation and were granted participation by both Tarrant County and Tarrant County College. The zone that is depicted in red is generally located west of State Highway 121, south of Glade Road, and north of Cheeksbarger Road. The original project cost was estimated at $12.1 million and consisted primarily of street improvements. That was a Rio Grande Boulevard that connects Glade Road and Cheeksbarger. We needed a bridge over Little Bear Creek. We added Brazos Boulevard and added all of the drainage and water and wastewater improvements. The city of Ulyss issued the debt to fund all of the improvements, and that is being repaid from the proceeds of the TERS. At this point in time, all of these improvements have been completed. The city had pledged 75% of our ad valorem tax for 25 years, and we committed 30% of our sales tax for 15 years and 20% for the remaining 10 years. Tarrant County also committed 75% of its ad valorem tax for 15 years, 50% for 10 years, and Tarrant County College committed 50% for the 25 years. We want to give you a quick update on the progress of the development. In just the past few months, we have celebrated the opening of Dave &amp; Buster's. We have also opened Dick's Sporting Goods, that was in August. And then that was followed by our in-line retailers, which included Michael's Home Goods, Ulta, Kirkland's, Boot Barn, and Five Below. And those are all open for business at this point. Kay Hobnannian has also started 33 of their planned 127 homes, and this part of the development is also proceeding at a very rapid pace. Today, we are here to ask for your consideration of an amendment. The developer had originally planned a lifestyle center that was going to predominantly accommodate office space in the center of the development. Due to the enhanced market conditions, they believe that an enhanced lifestyle center would be appropriate and would create additional retail, restaurant, and entertainment opportunities for our city. However, this enhancement will require the addition of a parking garage. There is no additional space left for surface parking. The developer is also proposing a park that would connect the lifestyle centers, the theater and the Dick's, I'm sorry, the Dave &amp; Buster's, and bring the pedestrian traffic into the lifestyle center. The request is that the taxing entities participate in 50% of the cost, and the developer would pay the remaining 50% of the cost. Our 50% portion would be approximately $3.2 million, with $1.9 million for the parking garage and $1.2 million for the park, and then it would also fund the bond issuance costs. The city would again issue the debt to pay for the improvements, and then we would simply ask that the TERS be allowed to reimburse and help us pay that debt service. We are not asking for any change in the participation percentages or the boundaries of the TERS. To give you an idea, if you look at the map, you can see where the proposed theater would be in relationship. There's also a Belton apartment store that is currently under construction. That is the end of the lifestyle centers that we just discussed. That should be open in March. And then you see the location of the Dave &amp; Buster's. And you can see what we're trying to do is create the pedestrian orientation to be able to bring those patrons out of the in-line centers and into the lifestyle center from the movie theater and from the other shopping avenues there. And then these are just some of the renderings of how we would accomplish that. As we mentioned, the total cost is $3.2 million, but due to better-than-expected interest rates on the debt, our overall increase is only expected to be about $2.2 million because we're expecting almost a million dollars in interest savings. TCC had originally capped their contribution at $1,869,713, and we expected that debt to be retired early in 2025. With the amended request, we are asking that the cap be increased by $294,227 for a total of $2,163,940. And we anticipate that this would still have an early payoff date in mid-2027. For this additional contribution, we expect that your net benefit would increase from $7.2 million to $8.3 million, or an additional $1,048,847 in net benefit. And we would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Motion to approve the request for Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Number Three Participation. Mr. Heed, second?
You don't want to just harass them for a little while?
Well, technically, once the motion is on the floor, you can harass it, well. All right, we have a motion in a second. Here it comes, get ready. Mr. Greenhill?
Just for the record, Mr. McLendon, you have recommended this is to be approved as to form. I'm sure you should.
Bill, I don't think your mic is on.
You have suggested that this should be approved as to form, but I believe you should recommend it to us?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
It is correct, you recommend it.
Right.
Right, you recommend it.
Say the words, you recommend it.
Yeah, I did, I did. Yes. I recommend it, Mr. Greenhill, I do, I do.
By the way, you're on this TIFF board, are you not?
I am, sir.
Okay, okay.
All right, we have a motion in a second and additional questions, sorry, sorry. All those in favor, aye. Any opposed, motion passes. Item number 11, presentation by the Ulyss Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Number Four and appointing Mr. McLendon to that TIFF board.
Ms. Appleman, this is, I asked Ulyss to also present on this because they will be coming back to you for this TIFF, so I wanted you to have an overview of the project. But the only request is to appoint a representative to the TIFF board.
Motion to approve Mr. McLendon to this up-and-coming board, Mr. Carter, and seconded by Mr. Heed. Any questions, comments, all those in favor, aye. Any opposed? Another high-paying board job, Mark.
No, I'm fine. I want to invite Ms. Getchell to make a presentation of this upcoming.
We did, in full disclosure, want to come before the board with both presentations so that we did not come before you and then come back just a few days later with another request. In the history of the city of Ulyss, we've only ever had one TERS, that was Glade Parks. We are at a phenomenal time in our city where we are experiencing the development that passed us by for many years. So we do have another TERS, TERS Number Four. To explain, TERS Number One and Two never materialized, those were many years ago. And so we wanted to present to you this opportunity that we believe is critical to the city of Ulyss. Whereas the Glade Parks TERS was certainly an economic development item for the city of Ulyss and provided lots of shopping opportunities, we do have a great deal of our city that is aging and in need of some revitalization. The city has a number of apartment complexes that were constructed in the 1960s and the 1970s. And most of those complexes have been maintained, and the properties are in good condition and still operated today, but a few of those have fallen into serious disrepair. The city has worked with those owners for a number of years to try to encourage reinvestment into those properties. And we have also developed a multifamily inspection program to try to keep these living units at an acceptable level for our residents. However, on September the 22nd, 2015, our city council created the Tax Increment Reinvestment Number Four for the redevelopment of a 56-acre tract that contained three of these deteriorated apartment complexes that had simply gone beyond what we believe to be an acceptable standard. This area is just south of State Highway 183, it's east of Highway 157, and north of State Highway 10, for those of you that might not be familiar with our area. The three apartment complexes that are located at the center of that property was known as Concord House, Concord Terrace, and Shadow Creek. And all of these complexes have failed our minimum living standard for a number of years. All of the units are currently unoccupied, but the deteriorated structures remain on our property. We've included some photographs to show you the condition of these apartments. So as you can see, they had fallen into great disrepair. Some of the more serious code violations were unsafe stairways, balconies, exposed electrical wires, and then raw sewage that was allowed to be discharged onto the common areas of the apartment complexes. Some of the balconies actually reached the stage that we had to prohibit use of them for fear that they could actually collapse. There was also a lot of deterioration on the facade of the building, and as our inspectors were going out and trying to work with the management to determine what repairs could be made, they determined that much of this deterioration actually was into the structural components of the complex. The swimming pool had fallen into disrepair many years ago, had been covered, this is its current condition. And as well, the spa had obviously become an attractive nuisance for mosquitoes. One of these complexes actually caught fire almost a year ago, and at that point, the ownership chose to shut that complex down completely. And that is just another photograph of the condition of that particular apartment. So as you can see, from the city's perspective, we felt it was imperative to bring some change to this critical intersection within our city. Our city has over 54% of our housing is multifamily housing. We are not in any way opposed to multifamily housing, and you will see in the new development that we're proposing, we're actually proposing to add back some multifamily housing on this particular site. But we do believe that those that are living in the multifamily units deserve an acceptable standard of living. So we began to explore avenues by which we could cause change in this area. And we were pleased to find a developer that was willing to purchase the acreage and propose a mixed-use development for the city. He is proposing a mostly residential development. It would include both single-family, multifamily, and a smaller portion of retail. The single-family would include row homes, townhomes, and villas, and the expected price range is about $212,000 to $300,000. It would include about 259 of the single-family homes, 393 apartment units, and 67,000 square feet of the retail and restaurants. I'm sorry, I've got a slide behind there for you. The current taxable value of the property is about $11 million, and post-development, we expect this to increase to $121 million. And we also expect that the retail would generate approximately $20 million in sales. The site has considerable issues. There is a substantial amount of drainage that comes from State Highway 183 that must be dealt with. And that is also in addition to the abatement of the asbestos that must occur, as well as the demolition, in order to prepare the property for the regular infrastructure that is required. that is required, which would be the streets, the water, and the wastewater. Again, the City of Ulyss would issue the debt to cover the infrastructure cost, and we are asking for participation from the other taxing jurisdictions to help fund those improvements. The city council has pledged 75% of our ad lorem tax, and they have pledged 50% of our unrestricted 1 cent or 25% of our full 2 cent sales tax. We have also requested participation from Tarrant County and from the Hospital District, and we expect that they will take action on this in November. We are requesting that the College District consider a 50% pledge, of course, only the increased revenues from the site, and that would be for a 25-year term. If you were to participate at the requested participation level, we expect that the net benefit to the College District would be just under $4 million, and your participation would not exceed $2,354,501. The funds would be used to pay for the debt service on approximately $16.5 million of public improvements, and we have detailed those for you in that list. As we mentioned, the city council has already created the TERS number four board, and they have designated a position on the Board of Directors for the College District, and we appreciate you appointing Mr. McLendon to serve on that board. And then we would, of course, work with Mr. McLendon to try to get on a future agenda for your consideration.
Thank you. We have much of what you've just presented in our notebooks and on our, excuse me, online files, so we will review that and hopefully be able to work with you. Very ambitious.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chancellor.
Item number 11, consideration and approval of inter-local purchasing system cooperative agreement with McMillan James Equipment Company to provide a cooling tower for the South Campus in the amount of $336,400. Ms. Petty?
Thank you, President Appleman. Good evening, Madam Chancellor, Board of Trustees. Thank you for your consideration tonight of this item, which is continued work at our South Campus for mechanical, electrical, plumbing, infrastructure issues. You have your summary before you that talks a little bit about the need for this and the history, that we are replacing systems that are 25, 30 years old, happened in 1985. I think it's time. If you have any specific questions about this, we will be coming back to you for the installation. This is just for the purchase of the equipment, and again, it is for $366,400, and we would greatly appreciate your approval of this item this evening if there's no questions.
Motion to approve.
So moved.
Mr. Greenhill, seconded by Mr. Heed. Any questions of Ms. Petty?
What do you anticipate the installation cost will be?
We are pricing that right now. I think you have some information in your packet or in your book that we think it's probably going to be in excess of about $400.
About $500,000.
Okay, sorry, I'm off. So as you know, pricing goes up when you blink, so we'll come back to you with the accurate pricing, but half a million dollars, it sounds like our expert is indicating.
Okay, thank you. And the questions?
And we're hoping to be back in November, but because of the timing of this board meeting with our next one on November 12th, we may have to beg for a December quick board meeting to get an approval on that if we can't make the November timing.
Are you waiting on bids to come in, is that the problem?
I'm sorry.
You're waiting on bids to come in?
Yes, to get the pricing right.
Tell them to hurry.
So to be able to get it to you on time, so.
Okay.
But we'd make it quick in December.
Yes.
If we needed to.
Ms. Yellen?
That was my question about whether they were waiting on bids.
Other questions or comments, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Item number 13, consideration and approval of the renewal of the McAfee protection software from SHI Government Solutions in the amount of $203,543.78. Mr. Marshall?
Thank you, President Appleman, Chancellor Robinson, Board of Trustees. Any questions? This is our antivirus software for all of our servers and all of our computers.
Why McAfee?
It's a renewal. We change, we look at the environment every year. It would require significant training for us to change this software at this time.
So it's what you're used to.
It is what we're used to. It's priced competitively. There are actually free ones, but they don't provide the coverage of the servers that the McAfee product does.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Carter?
I'll second it.
Ms. Yellen, seconded. Any other questions or comments, discussion, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. Consideration and approval of purchase of Dell computer desktops, laptops, and monitors from SHI Government Solutions in an amount not to exceed $2,186,000. Mr. Marshall?
This is the last year of the three-year contract with Dell, and this will cover the anticipated purchase of 2,900 computers, laptops, and terminals. We will be going through the process of another reverse auction. We will spend this year going through that process in preparation for next year, but we'll have the vendors come in again and provide their equipment for our specifications, and then we go through the reverse auction where they bid each other down.
Motion to approve.
Moved to approve.
Mr. Heed, second.
Second.
Mr. Greenhill. Questions, comments, discussion, all those in favor, aye. Any opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
By the way, I hope the world appreciates the continued investment that we're making in this particular type of technology, because it's getting to be a very large number.
Item number 16, consideration and approval of a two-year agreement with Open Channels Group to provide media placement purchases and public relations marketing services in the amount of $1 million each year. Mr. Gates?
Yes, this is the continuation of our marketing and strategies and media placement here in Tarrant County. This is, we had seven companies to respond to this RFP. Of the seven, they were scored and shortlisted down to three. The three came in to do interviews with our selection committee, and then they were
Motion to approve.
So moved.
Dr. Morrison, second.
Second.
Mr. Greenhill. Questions, comments?
My comment is, I'm sorry, my comment is that this is terminable at any time by either party, so it's not exactly a year contract. If people get unhappy, you can terminate it, so.
Yes. So the previous contract was $750,000 a year, and I know most of this is for advertising and placement. Do some agencies keep a piece of each placement fee? Is that, would that happen with this particular group?
10% on media placement.
So basically, the contract is, besides their consultation fee, would be for another $100,000 a year added on to their...
If we place that much media.
Yeah.
Some things we replace ourselves.
Do you plan to?
No, we don't place at that rate. A lot of what you see that's spent out of this million would be, you know, various sponsorships, Main Street, and some of the other things that we do throughout the course of the year.
And the monthly, and the monthly for this, I know it said it in...
$10,000.
It's $10,000 a month, so it's $120,000 plus $100,000 if they placed a million, so $220,000, so $440,000 for two years is what they would max out?
Well, we would actually have to come back to you all for the second year, just because of the way it evolves after November of this year. We'd have to come back because the amount would be out. Right, that's what I said, we're not placing that much media. So it wouldn't be the amount that you projected for the 10% commission?
No, I'm just saying the media in here, so.
Yes, sir.
Call question? Other questions, comments, Ms. Yellen?
Nope.
Okay. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Carter? I'm sorry, I skipped item number 15. Consideration and approval of our insurance renewal in the amount of $1,255,970 estimated. Ms. Robinson?
Thank you. Our insurance policies are up for renewal on November 30th. We have a quote for all of our renewals for $1,255,970. That is approximately $110,000 from last year. The change is being driven, we've added a cyber liability coverage, which accounts for $85,000 of the increase. The cyber liability coverage is necessary in the event that we get hacked or some of our breach of our systems occurs, and it covers both property expenses, the first-party coverage, and liability expenses if we get sued by students or anyone else for taking their information. It's also driven by our increase in our workers' comp of approximately $13,000. As you may know, workers' comp is estimated by retrospective premium adjustments, they look over your losses for the prior year, and when they did that, they increased our insurance by another $13,000 on premiums. So we would ask that the board approve renewal of all of our insurance policies in the amount of $1,255,970.
Motion to approve.
So moved.
Mr. Carter, seconded by Dr. Morrison. Questions, comments, discussion, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I do have a question. How does that, this insurance that we're purchasing and the fact that we're obtaining some new McAfee software, supposedly some sort of security software, how does that work? How do the two work in conjunction? Or do we, because in other words, with McAfee, do we have any protection or any sort, do they have any liabilities of any sort once that's loaded on our computers?
I do not remember what the McAfee contract says. Mr. Marshall, do you want to come up and answer?
No. Maki, you can't, I think, I don't think you're allowed to put your contractual responsibility that we have with our students onto a vendor like McAfee. It's best efforts, so, you know, there's always news viruses. There's always, every package or every piece of hardware or software that you can buy has a vulnerability, even McAfee.
There's also internal issues of, you know, of security breaches that are, in fact, that'd probably be most of them.
Yeah.
Occurred from within the organization.
So this is, we've been looking at this for, you know, quite a while now, so. And as you see, whoever gets hacked, it doesn't matter the name of the organization. Every big universities get hacked, large Target got hacked, and you'll never see the virus vendor getting, sharing in the coverage, you know, it's, it's just, it's another barrier you put in place, but they might go around a third or fourth barrier. You really don't know quite for sure which barrier they've come over or through to get to your environment.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Other questions? All those in favor of approving the purchase of the insurance renewal in the amount of $1,255,970, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Item number 17, consideration and approval of the addition of three contractors to the pool of job-order contracting general contractors for a period of one year. Mr. McLendon?
We request approval to add three contractors to the pool of job-order contractors previously approved to replace three firms who are no longer in the pool. The three firms who left the pool, one is no longer doing job work, one moved out of the area, and one no longer does any commercial constructions. If you would like further information, I'm sure Mr. Herndon will be happy to provide any...
Alex, you want to roll that up so we can see the firms that are on the list, please?
Our BaseCom, LMC, and Chambers Engineering, those are the three firms that we're asking.
The new, those are the new...
Yes, ma'am, that is correct.
And the board has that information in their packets, so I'll assume they've seen it, and I would ask for a motion to approve.
Don't move it.
Mr. Carter, seconded by Mr. Heed. Any questions, comments, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Why don't you stay right there and move into your monthly financial report?
All right. Good evening. So right now, we are looking at the first month of our fiscal year. This is a great, exciting time for us, so we'll be able to follow the whole history, and I want to make sure that you ask me if I'm not giving enough detail, so I'll try to provide this for you. All right. So the first thing, what we look is, we look at revenue and expenses that are going to be greater than 15%, and how you determine that is 1/12th is 8%, but rather than looking at 8%, we're just going to look at 15. So we want to go look at, first, we're going to look at the revenue, that seems to be something that's very important. So we look at estate appropriations, so we're good with estate appropriations, it's about 12, it is trailing as we expect it to be. Our property receipts, if you look at that 0.03%, what happens with property taxes is they're actually, the larger payments are being paid in the month of December, January, and February. So that's something that we expect, it happens all the time. Now, when you look at your credit tuition, your total tuition, and funded and unfunded tuition, those are some healthy percentages, and you would think for the first month. But that is because you record, the way that the school system is, you have a major recording in the time of the fall, you have a major time that records in the time of the spring, and then you have a summer. So that's why those percentages are quite nice. Now, when you look at the interest income, 55%, that is due to the monthly mark-to-market adjustment. So that's going to be something that is going to continue to change, and that's accorded to GASP rule. So sometimes, if you see a negative, not to be surprised, that's the way that they ask us to do that, and you'll be able to see how you do your, when you look at the financial portfolio, you'll see how the market adjustment changes on a monthly basis. So if we look at the total revenue, it's at 10%, that's higher than 8%, so we are satisfied with that process, all right? So now we're going to look at the expenses. So we're looking at expenses greater than 15%. So I'd like to remind all the board that in the month of September, we reverse, we're recording prepaid expenses, which is a reversal of prepaid that we had in the month of 8/31. So when we talked of prepaid in the month of August, now is the time to record that prepaid expenses. And what a prepaid means was, it was a period, an expenditure that benefited more than one period. For example, if you look at a software or an insurance, you will prepay. Chancellor Robinson has just asked you to look at insurance. Typically, insurance will cover for more than one period, so it becomes a prepaid because you're encumbering the total policy. But we want to be able to adjust a fiscal, a yearly policy has to be adjusted to a fiscal period, which is from September to August. So that's why you have this. We also have encumbrances, and encumbrances is items that you're going to see that they reflect more than one period. For example, I think the classical is when you look at a lease. When you look at the leases right there, you will see that it's sitting on 106%. And all that means is that you're encumbering the whole period of leases for the whole lease, whether or not it covers a period. So what's going to happen with the encumbrances, when you look at them, is right now, you're looking at $91,000, it's an expense, and you're looking at an outstanding encumbrances of 686K. The next month, the encumbrance would go down and the expense goes up. So that's the way that you handle the encumbrances. So not to worry when you're seeing larger percentages. The percentages that we are seeing are what we are expecting to see. So that is not anything that we would be concerned with. So we would like to, okay, that's fine, next page, we're going to go all the way to the bottom. Okay? And so when we look at, we'll look at total, the contingency is 58.4%, that is the purchase of the warehouse, right? And when you look at the total expenses, it's 13.7%, it's less than 15%. So we are not at all, that is exactly what we are expecting. So if we look at it, we're actually good, if you consider that you have encumbrances there, and you also have prepaid, 13.7% is a good percent for your total expenses. Now, okay, this is, so, the teacher, I want to make a comment over all the expenses for a second. The teacher retirement system, TRS, is the type of retirement system that most of our employees use. And so the GASP, the governmental accounted standard boards, has asked that the pension liability not be reflected under their books, but rather on the books of each institution... And so the GASP, the Governmental Accountant Standard Board, has asked that the pension liability not be reflected under their books, but rather on the books of each institution. GASP has asked that, so, because it's a better description. They're saying, these are your employees, this is the pension liability, I want each institution to reflect it. So this, so the governor, so the GASP board says, now you're going to reflect it. And so in order to reflect that, what they do is they'll put their pension is now put as a charge against, is reflected against your fund balances. So if you visit, I think that you have a meeting, if you visit with the other community colleges, you're going to hear that some community colleges may have a negative fund balances. TCC does not. We have a healthy fund balance, and it was an adjustment. Now, this adjustment will not be considered by standards and force. But when you finish, when our external auditors finish their audit in the month of November, they will come, and you will have a lot of detail, they will explain it in detail, you'll be able to see the whole effect, and they'll be talking about what it does to your balance sheet. But I just wanted you to know so that when you hear this term, your GASP sixty-eight, you're familiar with it, and that your CFO has told you about it. So you're well-invested, and that you have no, you have not been negatively affected. Just saying that, not to worry. So it's because you have a healthy position there. Okay, investments. Okay, all right.
Zero.
So, on the investments, this one, what we've decided is, our finance committee has asked us to consider some new changes, they're very good changes. And so I'm going to take this period to explain all these changes. It's going to take a little bit of time, but I know that you're going to enjoy that, and then you can, you will be able to tell me if this is enough or if you want more. I mean, we're, we're happy. So first of all, let's start, let's start with our pools. Okay, if you look at your pools on number one, so you want to, here, let me see if I can, how does this, where is the cursor on this? Okay, on a hundred million dollars, okay. So our beginning balance is a hundred million dollars, okay? And if you've seen, our next thing is, we have a change, we have increased one point eight mil, so that's the next number, right? And, so the end in balance is a hundred and two mil, all right? Okay. Now, if we look at our other short terms, again, to remind you, our short terms are between ninety to a hundred and eighty days. We had a beginning balance of twenty million dollars. We have one that matured, okay? So if you can see, you can see it's nine twenty-eight fifteen. It matured, and so our ending balance is zero. We are already looking at what we're going to do in October on our short-term investments. Okay? Now, if we look at, now we're going to consider our U.S. securities, okay? Now, if you look at our securities, our beginning balance is a hundred and ten million dollars, all right? We had one, the Federal National Mortgage Association was called. This is something that happens in the industry all the time. These get called, and that's just temporary times. We'll have to see what happens with the Fed. Everybody is, well, I'm not saying anything, we'll wait to see what the Fed does. And your end in balance is going to be a hundred million dollars. If you look at your total portfolio, is two hundred and two million dollars, okay? Now, we want to go and we want to talk about investment performance, all right? Keep coming, a little more. Let's go down. Okay, more, more. Okay, okay, just right there, okay, just right there. Okay, so we're going to tell you that your yield through nine thirty is point five nine percent. And right now, instead of using, we would use the thirteen or the thirty-six week, it has been recommended, so we're using the one-year T-bill, which is point two seven percent. And you're looking at your spread is point three two percent. The way you get that is fifty-nine minus twenty-seven equals thirty-two. So now, we want to go to the top, and we're going to, we've been asked for new reporting requirements. I know, there's more, I know, this is really exciting stuff, I know, I know. And so I don't want you all to miss anything, just all the way to the top, right there. So the call date has been something that they've asked us. And so basically, as you come down, come down, it tells you exactly when our securities would be called. So you know that. So there's no guessing there, you can tell you when it's called, it could be at any time, or that's something. So you're able to look at your portfolio and know exactly what your call date is. Now, if you want to come down, we're going to talk to what's the weighted average maturity. So that's another recommendation. So if we look at the weighted average maturity, it's three hundred and ninety-three days. And the way that this is calculated is by taking the total in each investment, take it against a percentage that it moved, it has, it's multiplied everything, and you add that up. So it means that your total investment days matures in about three hundred and ninety-three days. So that's the WHAM, okay? So, just a second. So the other thing that we wanted to show to you is, the last one, is our total accrued interest, and you can see that, that's a hundred and eleven K. So that's what you did for this month. Is there any questions? Okay. So you can let us know if you think this is too much or more, or whatever you want, sir.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
The reason why you're going to short-term securities is, is the recent interest rate?
We want to see that, yes, sir. We are trying to look at that. What we're wanting to do, we don't ever want to have a security that we have to call. We want it to let it expire organically or when the due date is. We're looking at what happens to interest rate, and we're moving our policy. However, there's always, and we look for direction from the finance committee, but there is a, there is a difference between if you want to go to short to long, that's always going to be the call, the, how you say, the trade-off. So that is, the longer you have, you have higher interest rates, but the shorter, you have shorter. However, higher interest rates today may not equate with higher interest rates three or five years from now. Right now, the difference is just not too big, but if you had looked over a continuum of seven years, no, we didn't know, I didn't know, I wish I had known, a lot of us didn't know, that anything that was seven or ten or twelve percent would have been goal right now. But nobody knew that it would have gone to the interest rates that we're facing right now. So that is a trade-off. That is a trade-off, and that is exactly what we're looking, is a trade-off for the board to consider, and that's where you have your WHAM, and that's exactly what that is. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. McLendon. Chancellor's report, Mrs. Robinson? We have two new staff introductions. I asked Dr. Black to come, please. Dais?
Thank you. Mrs. Appleman, Chancellor Robinson, members of the board. I am very pleased this evening to introduce Dr. Roslyn Walker, Dr. Walker, if you'll come up, as the new Director for Academic Operations. Dr. Walker has come to TCC after serving for two years as the Director for the Center for Independent Studies at Cedar Valley College in Dallas. Dr. Walker has more than ten years of progressive experience in higher education as an instructor and as an administrator. She also taught science as a high school teacher for nine years, including a tenure at Trimble Tech High School here in Fort Worth. Dr. Walker is going to be working closely with Dr. Nancy Currie in Academic Affairs to provide administrative support for critical functions such as the written and online catalog, faculty credentialing, and the common course learning materials. Dr. Walker has a bachelor's degree in biology from the University of North Texas and a master's degree in education from San Francisco State University. She also holds a doctorate of education in supervision, curriculum, and instruction from Texas A&amp;M University Commerce. Her hobbies and interests include reading and traveling with her daughter. Please join me in welcoming Dr. Walker to Tarrant County College.
Good evening to the President, Chancellor, and the trustees. Thank you for the opportunity to serve Tarrant County College, the community, the employees, as well as the students. My goal is to help in every area that I am in charge of. Probably about twenty-five to fifty percent of the people in this room, even in my short six weeks of employment, I have worked with in one way or the another. So I do appreciate the opportunity to continue serving the Tarrant County community.
Thank you. Welcome. The other new staff introduction is from Dr. Jordan.
Good evening, President Appleman, Chancellor Robinson, members of the board. I'm really pleased to introduce and welcome Dr. Tisley Medley in her new role as Director of Counseling for South Campus. Dr. Medley is no stranger to South Campus or to TCC. In fact, Dr. Medley joined TCC South Campus in two thousand and five as Assistant Professor of Psychology. She earned tenure in two thousand and nine and was promoted to the rank of Associate Professor in two thousand and thirteen. Dr. Medley has over fifteen years' experience in higher education and private counseling practice. Her work in higher education includes admissions, advising, adjunct and full-time teaching, college counseling, and clinical supervision. Dr. Medley plans to use her range of experience to bridge the gap between counseling and advising staff as well as South Campus faculty. During her tenure at TCC, she has served on a broad range of campus and district committees. Her most recent areas of focus have been working with the District Office of Institutional Diversity and Inclusion. She has also worked with the District Safe Space Committee and Spectrum, the LGBT student organization on South Campus. In this capacity, she has designed and delivered workshops and seminars for campus and college stakeholders, including faculty and the Chancellor's executive leadership team. These workshops and seminars have focused on using culturally responsive pedagogy in teaching and creating a diverse and inclusive workplace. Dr. Medley holds a bachelor's degree from the University of Texas at Austin, a master's degree in clinical counseling psychology from Southern Methodist University, and a doctorate in counseling psychology from Texas Women's University. Dr. Medley is also a licensed marriage and family therapist and a board-approved supervisor and a licensed professional counselor. Dr. Medley lives in Grand Prairie with her husband, James, who I think is here also. And, I'm sorry, her husband, James, and her son, John, yes. So help me welcome Dr. Tisley Medley.
Hello, President Appleman, and Chancellor Robinson, and other board members that are here this evening, as well as my President of South Campus, Dr. Jordan. I'm really excited about this new opportunity to serve South Campus and the district in this new position that really bridges a lot of my previous experience, to be able to serve students in a new way, and hopefully have even more student contact than I had before. Particularly, I'm ready to be a champion within Student Development Services and throughout the district when it comes to issues of diversity and inclusion, so that we can continue to create an inclusive environment throughout the district, and to be a model for the community as well when it comes to those issues. So I'm just ready to jump in with both feet and get things moving, and as Dr. Jordan mentioned, hopefully to provide that bridge between faculty and advising and testing services that is sometimes there, and to really be an advocate from both sides. So thank you all, again, for the opportunity and for allowing me to be here this evening.
Next, board members, we have accolades, and I heard you all loud and clear. You said you wanted to hear more about numbers and data, and that you could read the other accolades. So I've asked for data, and let's see if we can deliver. On academic affairs and student success, you know that the Achieving the Dream was a five-year initiative from, starting in two thousand and ten. I have to relate this increased retention numbers to that Achieving the Dream initiative. That's, that is the one thing that changed over the past five years. So for degree-seeking, first-time-in-college students over the last five years, you see it's gone up from forty-seven point nine percent to fifty-one point four percent on the percentage retained. On South Campus, South Campus has what they call a two-plus-one program with Texas Tech, and it's a, where they get a teaching certificate, a four-year certificate. They do the first two years at Tarrant County College, and then they go for another year at Texas Tech while they're doing their student teaching. You can see fourteen students in the second cohort graduated, thirteen are now employed with Fort Worth ISD with a starting annual salary of fifty thousand dollars. So it's a very successful program. Northeast Campus, first-time-in-college students who have meaningful contact with advisors are retained at a higher rate than those who do not. So there's a real push to have that relationship. The, on Northeast Campus, one thousand, two hundred and seven first-time-in-college students were met with advisors and counselors in fall of two thousand and fifteen. On Northwest Campus, another thing that the research has shown increases student retention and success is supplemental instruction. If you remember, supplemental instructors are students who excel in a particular course and are recommended by the faculty, and they get paid to assist students or to mentor students. The goal on Northwest Campus was to increase the spring SI participation by five percent, and you can see they increased it much more than that. They were hoping for forty-nine percent, and they got sixty-five percent for the fall of two thousand and fifteen. On Southeast Campus, on counseling and advising, the goal for fall of two thousand and fifteen was to manually register two hundred and thirty-four first-time-in-college students who are TSI liable in all three areas. What they actually achieved was manually registering three hundred and sixty-four students, so they achieved a hundred and fifty-six percent of their goal. On Trinity River Campus, according to the Texas Board of Nursing, the preliminary pass rate for TCC nursing program was eighty-three point four percent, which represents nearly a two-point gain from the previous year. Thank you. On the recent activities, you can read for yourself, but one I did want to point out is, October twenty-second, I participated in the Campus Carry Committee kickoff. As you know, the legislature has mandated that we have a committee, which has been selected, which has met. The committee will make recommendations concerning regulations, and probably one of the most important thing that they're going to look at is which areas of the campus are going to be gun-free zones, and how will that be handled through lockers, et cetera. And so they will meet again on November nineteenth, but we have a very diverse committee. We have a student on the committee, we have faculty on the committee, we have facilities on the committee, so it's very well represented. That completes my report. Thank you. Mr. Heed and Mr. Greenhill and I went to San Diego a couple of weeks ago to the Association of Community College Trustees Annual Leadership Congress, and I've asked, and I've, it is, but I'm not there. Mr. Greenhill, Mr. Heed, and I attended the Association of Community College Trustees Annual Leadership Congress in San Diego last week, and I've asked the two of them to report to you. You want to start, Mr. Heed?
Sure. One of the sessions, we went to five or six different sessions there, most of them were very, very good, very informative. One, of course, that's primary on our mind, was the conducting an effective CEO search. I think the key factor that they stressed was, take your time and do it right. This is probably the most important job that a board has to do, and we're just going to take our time and do it the way it's supposed to do and try to get somebody to replace our incredible chancellor. Another really good program that Mr. Greenhill and I went to was the Urgency of Now. One of the, the presenters published this book, and I recommend that to the trustees and anybody else that's interested. They're talking about a transition of education to a competency-based program of education where the emphasis is not so much on how much we teach and how many credit hours. where the emphasis is not so much on how much we teach and how many credit hours a student takes, but how much does a student learn? How well-prepared are they in terms of the education that they've obtained and the skill level they've obtained to actually go out and be successful in obtaining a job and being competent on that job? We also heard Janet Napolitano about all the things she's doing in the state of California. We attended another session, Louise and I did, about community colleges that have residential facilities on campus. There was a lot of pros and a lot of cons, and I don't think the presenters really... They were from Leftovershoe, Montana, I think, and they... The presentation, I mean, it was interesting, but not applicable to what we're considering in Fort Worth and in Tarrant County. But it was interesting nonetheless. And we were also asked to make a presentation. Again, it was entitled, the trustees made a presentation at the Congress, entitled "Student Success and Completion: Embracing a Culture of Change." And it was very, very well-attended. I counted, I think, somewhere around 40, 50 people. I mean, it was a full room. It was kind of hard to find us, but it was a full room, and everybody seemed to appreciate the presentation. This is the third year, I think, we've made that presentation, and they keep coming back and asking us to do it again. So it was very, very good. We also had a lot of good seafood, I can say that, in San Diego. So thank you for sending us.
My comment was, in regard to our presentation, basically, we talked a lot about culture change and the... what we do as a team to do that. We said it wasn't easy. Over the past five years, of course, we have changed a lot. But one of the things that surprised some of the audience was how involved the trustees were, are, how involved we are. Because a lot of the slides talked about, you know, had pictures of us here and over there, and having Louise Appelman at every Achieving the Dream meeting, and having reports on Achieving the Dream and what we do at every meeting. And I was just, you know, some of these directors maybe don't get it that they're supposed to be involved. And I think we're very, very fortunate, and I congratulate our board for our involvement and being very interested in student success and the teamwork that we get from you. We are very, very fortunate. That's the... That's one of the things I always come back with when I go to these meetings of how well we work together as a team. It's not always easy, but it is. Otherwise, we all, three of us, spend a lot of time, sometime during the politics, we went to meetings to elect people to various offices, and one important office that was that's now held by one of our own Texans, Roberto Zarate, is from the San Antonio Colleges, is now the... I think he's the Chair of the Board or Chair-elect of the ACCT, which is very important for us. And I also went to an executive committee meeting and of CCATT and a board meeting. That organization's doing well. We got a grant from the Gates Foundation to have meetings, regional meetings, to talk about efforts to, for student success in our various regions to educate trustees who are from maybe the smaller colleges and very small colleges. We'll probably have one of those in our region next year. That's into my report.
Thank you. And we thank Mr. Gates for chaperoning us and helping us with our presentation. Dr. Morrison attended a disability conference on our behalf.
Yes, this was based on the chancellor's history and devotion to diversity and inclusion. Tarrant County College, Trinity River Campus, co-hosted this three-day event as an outreach opportunity from the Mayor's Committee, the Fort Worth Mayor's Committee on People with Disability. We hosted the regional meeting, sorry, the state meeting for the Governor's Committee on People with Disabilities. And as a part of that, on Monday, we held a disability fair on the campus of Trinity River Campus where families and persons with disabilities came and were empowered with about 40 vendors and information sessions. And wonderful students from our Northeast Campus Pathways Program performed and excited the audience with their wonderful dance, got us off to a great start. And on the second day at the awards presentation, I'm pleased to announce that Dr. Jregalys Spack came to accept the award from the Mayor's Committee for Tarrant County College being, receiving the corporate entity award, who exemplifies in all of its policies and procedures full diversity and inclusion.
Congratulations. And thank you for representing us there. Miss, y'all have been busy representing us at a couple of events. One, you hosted an emcee to Trinity River Campus one night.
I did, that was the United Hispanic Council. We had a very nice turnout. They were recognizing some four... There were three different, actually several individuals, and there was a group for their contributions to the community. It was a very, really, very well-attended, and we even took some time to honor the chancellor and her contributions to the community as well. So it was very well-attended. I also had the opportunity, I'll have to echo what Dr. Morrison said about how that it's the people that make this institution so special. I had the opportunity to participate in the Abrazando a Lexito, which is embracing success event. It was a sixth annual event that was held at the Southeast Campus. It was very well-attended. There were about 225 people, students, faculty, and staff. And basically, what they were doing is, and I'm taking some notes here because I had so many folks that were able to help me about it, give me some details on it, but it was a huge collaboration with the college, and then there were some businesses that made some contributions as well. There were also some staff that provided some entertainment that was very, 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 very good entertainment. What happened was there was some scholarships that were granted to some students, and total number of students that were submitted their scholarship applications were 30, and several of them were recognized. What they did to submit for the scholarship is they created these little boxes, they're called cajitas, which is a small box that you decorate, and it somewhat depicts what your life, things that are important to you. And they were very, very creative, and it was just a culmination of Hispanic Heritage Month, and I was just so happy to be a part of it. So I want to thank Dr. Coppola and his staff, they were for your hospitality. The energy at your campus is amazing. Also, Dr. Maggie de la Teja from Northeast Campus, she was excellent. She was a wonderful hostess. And then also, Dr. Cavasso spoke that evening, and he was, it was just, his delivery was just very, very inspiring. He talked to the students, talked about his growing up, how he was actually, you know, working out in the fields with his parents, and, you know, here we see him today, and he's a superintendent of over 65,000, of the school district, over 65,000 students. And a couple of things that he left me with is that I was just, thought was really impressive, is that he said that, you know, things in life are going to be hard. And so he said, you know, accept that things are going to be difficult, understand them, and take action and do something about it. So I thought that was really important. He also talked about the right for everyone to be able to have access to education, which is very much what the spirit of the chancellor used to talk about all the time. So I found the whole evening very inspiring, and I'm just, was just happy to be a part of it. So thank you for your hospitality and to Dr. de la Teja for her wonderful job that she's doing. So again, it was a wonderful collaboration. Thank you.
Speaking of scholarships and hospitality, Dr. Gobin and his crew hosted the Mary Gorley Foundation yesterday in the usual tier-producing awards of scholarships. And then this next week, on Thursday night, I believe, the foundation will be hosting their scholarship dinner, and I know several of you will attend that. And thanks to those of you, many, we were on TCC overload yesterday at the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act seminar where we learned about the impact that that new legislation will have on our community and workforce training. So we'll be hearing more about that. Ms. Appelman?
May I mention one other thing? Our chancellor was to host, co-host, the Second Annual Iron Chef Competition sponsored by the Community Food Bank. She was to co-host that with Mayor Betsy Price, and that was held this past Thursday night on the campus of the beautiful Trinity River. And Dr. Madison just jumped right in, graciously accepted those responsibilities, and was an outstanding host. And of course, our friend Barbary Sanders just really worked the room. He just loves TCC. So it was a wonderful event. We had outstanding chefs from Fort Worth Club, all the famous restaurants downtown, mentored six teams of high school students from the culinary, Fort Worth ISD Culinary Arts Programs in the contest. So it was very exciting. It was a very exciting evening on Trinity River Campus.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Madison. All right, we will now go into closed session for Deliberation of Real Property, Section 551.072 of the Texas Government Code. Deliberation on Personnel Matters, Section 551.074, Texas Government Code. Consultation with our Attorney, Section 551.071, Texas Government Code. There is some possibility that we will return and take action on some of those items, but you are excused. And our next regular meeting is November the 12th here at Mayowen. So we will recess into executive session. Thank you for coming. Thank you for coming.
Okay. Thank you for staying with us. We do have a couple of motions to vote on. It's nine o'clock. So we'll reconvene and I would ask, we'll just move down the table. Ms. Yalom?
Yes, I make the motion to approve the chancellor's action plan for the 2015-2016 year.
Second.
Any discussion questions? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Heed?
I move to approve the chancellor executing the contract for sale and all closing documents for the property located at 5630 North Riverside Drive, Fort Worth, Texas 76137.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Greenhill? Any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I move to approve the acting chancellor's contract at $5,174 a month.
I'll second that.
Second by Dr. Morrison. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you for...
I think they're motioning second, sorry.
I'm sorry. Mr. Greenhill made the motion. Dr. Morrison seconded it. Come on, Mr. Gates, keep up.
Yes, thank you.
We are adjourned.